Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. City staff, in addition to our deputy city manager that's fielding in today, director of HR, excuse me, let me get that right, Mr. Coleman, welcome, sir. I think I already said my colleagues on council and invited guests and friends. Welcome to our public work session. I would now ask that my colleagues please note your presence by roll call. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes is absent. Mr. Hugel?
Present.
Mrs. Lucas-Burt?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Mr. Tillage?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Mayor Glover?
Here.
Just for information, council members, the voting board and the system is down due to the this weekend's weather activities. So we will be calling the vote this this evening.
Thank you, ma'am, for the clarification. And Mr. Coleman?
Sir.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, citizens, council, and staff. We only have one presentation for tonight, so I'm going to toss it over to our city attorney's office, who will have a gentleman from SIPSA to bring forth the information.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This morning, we're going to have an update from our executive director for SIPSA, Dennis Bagley. Dennis Bagley is no stranger to the city of Portsmouth. The SIPSA board is a board that I sit on ex officio. Our my co-board member is also in the audience, Luke McCoy, who is also no stranger to Portsmouth. They are they are both here representing SIPSA. And Dennis is Mr. Bagley is going to give us an update on the comings and goings and where we're headed for SIPSA. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Bagley. You have the floor.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I first want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to come today to talk to you about SIPSA and kind of where we're headed and why we're heading in that direction. Tonight, today is hopefully the beginning of dialogue that's going to take place over a year or two as we transition to the SIPSA that that we kind of have vision for in the future. I want to begin by giving you a little background about SIPSA and how we got to the point we are currently. January the 15th of 2018, SIPSA had been struggling with the fact that every community was was dealt a different hand when it came to waste, even though there was one regional authority. So SIPSA had was able to come together and have one use of support agreement that was identical for all eight of our member communities to sign off on. All of the eight member communities were part of that, so it was really kind of a celebration of something new for SIPSA. Because in the past, Virginia Beach had a better deal, Suffolk had a better deal, everybody was paying a different rate, and it just wasn't fair. So this was kind of a celebration across the region. And then, at the same time, those use of support agreements were set up to expire in 2027, June 30th of 2027. And the reason was because of a the fact that you don't want to be in an agreement if you don't know what you're going to do with the waste. So we had entered into an agreement with Wheelabrader through 2027 to take our waste. So if when that when that contract with Wheelabrader ended, we wanted our use of support agreements with the member communities to end. That way, they can make a determination as to how they want to move forward. If we came up with a different waste disposal solution that it didn't like, then they could move in a different direction. So this was kind of a time when when everything that had been wronged earlier became right again. That was all great because the waste energy facility had a lot of advantages. We were able to get a very good price. We negotiated, it was part of the team that negotiated that, and never dreamed when we started the negotiations, we would get there. But we had a very, very fair price at the time. Eighty-five percent of our waste was going to the waste energy facility on Victory Boulevard, being burned for steam, and we had much less waste going into the landfill. Really, the bulk of the waste that was going in the landfill was the ash that was being that was the kind of leftover or the residual of the process of burning. It was about 30% of the total volume. So we would cut 70% of the amount of waste that was going into the regional landfill. And that ash was considered beneficial daily or beneficial because we were able to use it as daily cover. Otherwise, we'd have to buy dirt to put in. So that that ash became pretty valuable. And then, the biggest part of that is that the the waste that we were putting in there was such a small amount, it kind of extended the life of the landfill for hundreds of years. And that's great if you can continue to do that. But unfortunately, that that wasn't going to be the case. Now, our current flow chart, and I think what's critical for you all is that bottom blue box, the city of Portsmouth and other communities, but the city of Portsmouth specifically had to take their waste from curbside directly over to the waste energy facility. Oftentimes, their trucks are waiting all the way out to the street to get to the tip floor to dump, and it just wasn't the best situation. We've been trying to build a transfer station for Portsmouth for a long time, but you can imagine trying to find a place to build a transfer station that's equitable is not necessarily an easy thing to do in any city. So we were continuing to do what we have been doing, and that's moving that waste directly from the curbside into the waste energy facility. But the plan has changed. The Navy came to the conclusion that it was in the interest of national security to build their own combined heat and power plant. And they notified Wheelabrader that in January of 2023, they would no longer be purchasing steam from Wheelabrader. And that steam accounted for, on average, $10 million a year in revenue. And I don't think there's any company that can afford to lose $10 million a year in revenue and still continue to operate. The Navy, after this council and the mayor and the mayor of Suffolk and several state leaders got together, pushed some federal leaders, we got with the rear admiral, they decided they would extend the contract to continue to take steam or continue to take waste through June 30th of 2024. And at that point, Wheelabrader would then stop taking any steam from from Wheel from Wheelabrader. So the Navy kind of gave the drop dead date after a lot of negotiations to June 30th of 2024. Once Wheelabrader knew that, then Wheelabrader came back to SIPSA and said, hey, we're going to have to end our contract with SIPSA on June 30th of 2024. All of our plans had been built around ending that contract June 30th of 2027, not June 30th of 2024. So, of course, SIPSA had to go to the to the drawing board and try to figure out how we're going to move through this process, adding three more years of capacity to the regional landfill. So on December the 16th, 2022, there was a fire at the waste energy facility. And that fire destroyed the conveyor that takes the waste from one side of the street to the other side of the street, and you all are well aware of that. And with that, Wheelabrader came back to SIPSA and said, wait a minute, we're not going to be able to take but 1,000 tons a day now. So now, we're not talking about recalculating all of our waste from June of 2024, we're talking about December of 2022. So since December of 2022, we've been moving waste to a facility that we were planning to expand in 2027. And where we are is we're kind of locked into capacity at the landfill, and we need to expand. So some of the direct impacts to you all, and this is probably redundant, you all have heard this, there'll be a loss of revenue from the closure of that facility. There was a there was a large amount of tool and material that was used at the facility, and the numbers have been run, and I'm sure you know what they are. Portsmouth curbside collection, once the Navy and and Wheelabrader had made their decisions, SIPSA immediately contracted for Portsmouth curbside collection trucks to begin to drop their waste at the facility on Frederick Boulevard called RDS. And the reason that we did that was because at 1,000 tons a day, we were set up as SIPSA to only move a certain number of tons a day. And when you have to take that those tons a lot further, then we can move less tons per day. So what we decided we would do is we would use the facility, the waste energy facility to take our night loads to, and then we would take our day loads to the to the landfill, and Portsmouth would drop their loads at RDS. That's actually been a win-win for everybody because Portsmouth trucks get in and out quicker than they did the RDF facility. SIPSA trucks have been able to manage the waste without any increase because we work around the clock. And we are putting less than we expected in the regional landfill because we're able to move some of that to private disposal, like Bethel and Atlantic landfill. So the next thing we began to look at was what's going to happen to the transfer station when SIPSA or when Wheelabrader closes? And we began to negotiate a deal with Wheelabrader and with the Navy for Portsmouth for SIPSA to take over the waste energy facility and use it as a transfer station for Portsmouth. So Portsmouth would then have their own transfer station. And this is a big deal because citing a transfer station is a tough job, and all of you know that. We've been before this council before with with locations, and there's not a good one, granted. But this is a facility that's already been operating, it's already permitted, it's already has the right use of support agreement, I mean, or conditional use permit, doesn't actually need a conditional use permit because it's designed correctly. But all of the things kind of lined up, that this is a good, good deal. So we moved forward, and we've been attacking that for the last year and a half. And we're able to, I'm pleased to come before you tonight and tell you that we're going to sign off on this deal on July the 1st. All the paperwork is done, it's just kind of waiting for the day to come. And then Wheelabrader will pay an early termination fee. That early termination fee will be used to renovate the facility. And I can promise you, if you've been down that corridor now, you see what it looks like, you won't recognize it when we take it over. Our facilities don't look that way, and this facility won't look that way. We've been working with both the Jordan Bridge, the United States Navy, and we're going to bring Portsmouth into the loop about how do we clean that corridor up and make it look nice? Because our facilities, if you ride by one of them, chances of knowing that that's a transfer station, unless you know that's a transfer station, it's just not going to happen. Because we try to keep our facilities clean, we keep them updated, and that's what we want to do in this corridor. So also came some impacts to the regional landfill, and these are significant, and this is a lot about what we want to talk about tonight. The RDF facility, refuse to drive fuel facility, could only process 1,000 tons per day. SIPSA's member communities produce 1,250 tons more than that. So what do we do with those tons? They're going in the regional landfill. SIPSA is now diverting its 1,250 additional tons away from Wheelabrader, where it was going originally. And all of the commercial waste that comes into any of our transfer stations is being diverted to a private landfill. We have agreement in our use of support agreement say that SIPSA will not move any commercial waste into the regional landfill. The regional landfill space is only for member communities' use. The additional waste being diverted to the regional landfill is really consuming airspace much, much faster than we had anticipated. Because, keep in mind, we were talking about 30% of the total in the form of ash, and we were using that as cover. So we're this landfill is coming out of the ground pretty quick now. And the use of that airspace has accelerated the need for expansion. Now, the future of the regional landfill is questionable to begin with, and I'm going to go over a few things and fill you on where we are with expansion. The remaining land at the landfill, about 300 acres, is all wetlands. There's no uplands left at the regional landfill. There was legislation at the state level that was made that said you cannot expand a landfill on more than two acres of wetlands. But there were two exceptions. One was an exception that was for a landfill located in Suffolk, operated by an authority, and one in Danville. So those two were exempted. So the last since 2019, we've been trying to get those those new cells permitted, and we're hopeful that next month, we'll receive a final ruling, a record of decision from the Army Corps of Engineers. But we've spent about $3.2 million getting to that point from all of the consultants and all of the required testing that needed to be done, but we're there. And we feel we feel very confident that we will get a positive record of decision. So one of the things that we had to do when we're going through this three and a half, four-year process was the EPA was very concerned about cumulative impacts. And cumulative impacts is that, no, we didn't, we haven't asked for expansion past cells eight and nine, but on our master plan, there's cells 10, 11, and 12. So the EPA says, if you're going to plan to build them, we've got to look at that as part of your whole application, and we call that cumulative impacts. And they were they were really clear that those cumulative impacts are going to prevent us from being able to expand the regional landfill. So we went back to the EPA, and we said, okay, we understand where you're coming from. What if we put cells 10, 11, and 12 environmental easements on them, and they'll be they'll be preserved in perpetuity? We'll never build another cell on it. They said that might work. So that got us over that hill. So we're at a point where if we get cells eight and nine, which we are hopeful and feel confident that we will, cells 10, 11, and 12 will have to be put in an environmental easement, and they'll be preserved in perpetuity. The reality is that there's likely not to be any landfills built in this the state moving forward. This has become a big issue. The landfilling, and quite frankly, it should be. We put a man on the moon in three years, and we can't figure out what to do with our waste. We've got bright minds working on these issues. There are answers to this problem. And I think this pushes the pushes the envelope and forces it forces us into looking at this from a different perspective. We've got to find alternative ways to dispose of our waste. That's the bottom line. The remaining capacity at the regional landfill, and this is important slide, currently, we're working in cells five and six. We have two little over 2.3 million cubic yards. That gives us life in that cell through 2027, taking the region's waste there. Cell seven is permitted. It was designed, and we're preparing to construct. Cell seven gives us a little over 8.2 million cubic yards of capacity, and it gives us life expectancy through 2037. If if cells eight and nine are permitted, that's not currently permitted, that gives us additional 13 million 900 cubic yards of airspace, and would give us life expectancy through 2061. And we can sit here and right now and say, well, 2061, that's a little ways down the road. And this business is not very far down the road. We've got to figure out how we can make the 13 and the eight and the and the 2.3 last in the perpetuity. We need landfill space forever. We don't just need it through 2061. And I'm going to warn you that if you get to 2061, and you don't have another plan, those landfill, those cubic yards remaining in private landfills are going to be much more expensive than they are now because it's supply and demand. When the supply goes up, then the demand and demand stays same, what happens to the price? Goes down. But when the supply goes down and demand stays the same, then the price is going to go up. And I can't estimate what that is. We've done some toying with that, trying to figure out what that number might be. You know, we think this is there's no science applied to this, but we think it'd be in $100 a ton just for disposal alone. So it's not cheap. So SIPSA thinks that our future and the region's future is that we have to think differently. We have to think differently. We've got to forget about putting all of our land in the landfill because it's the cheapest way to handle it. That cheapest way is going to become the most expensive way if we don't do something about that now. So we looked at several things. First of all, the current state of recycling. Recycling does not work the way the way we're recycling in this country today. We're paying top dollar, and we're getting very little return on our investment. Make up the region's waste stream. We did a waste characterization study for the region's waste, and what we learned was 60% of the waste stream can be recycled. That's organics, plastic, paper, cardboard. When you look at the whole waste mass, organics drive the the number up. So why don't we look at ways to get the organics out? Public opinion, even though recycling is expensive, there are those who still want us to pay for recycling, the way we've always recycled. So that has to be a consideration. The environmental factors, you know, what what are we doing with our landfills? Are we filling our landfills up because we're not doing the best that we're cycling? Available technologies, there's new technologies that are out that have to be looked at. They include robots, artificial intelligence. You have one here in Portsmouth operating as a pilot. This is the wave of the future. This is the way waste is going to be be handled. And quite frankly, we agree with it because there should not be humans standing over a waste pile all day long, pulling recyclables out by hand. That's not the best use of of our talents. We need to be looking at better jobs for those folks. And one that's important, it will continue to be important, and it'll be important as we look through this process, and that's the net system cost. How much is it going to cost us to get rid of our waste? It's a key, it's a key question. But we've got to understand that the lowest cost is not the best way, and it's not going to be the lowest cost over time. You've got to look at the long haul. And then, one of the things that we're going to talk a lot about tonight is as we go move forward is contract terms. How long are these contracts going to need to be? Because if someone comes in to do this project, it may be $250, $300 million that they have to invest. How long of a contract are you going to have to have to bring the price per ton down to a point that it makes it reasonable? And then, another conversation that we need to have as a region is the breakup between municipal solid waste and commercial waste. With all due respect, I'm here tonight, I'll tell you that there is no difference in municipal solid waste and commercial waste. And I learned this lesson during COVID. If you went to McDonald's during COVID, and you bought a hamburger, it came in a bag, and you ate it there, it went in the can, right? But when you took it home, you put it in your garbage, it become MSW. So the same bag could be both ways. There's no difference. And if you increase the price of commercial waste, what's going to happen to the price of goods and services in the region? It's going to go up. So we have to look at this as one lump sum of waste, and how do we handle all of the waste in the region? So I brought to our board the idea of going out for an alternative waste disposal, RFP, and the board shot me down. They said, I don't think we need to do that. Think we need to go out for an RFI. So we did that. Staff went back, and we put together a request for information. We put the request for information out. We got 10 proposals back on the requests for information from all over the country. The request for information gave us other information that we took back, and then we began the process of putting together RFP to go out for proposals. Now, the RFP was pretty specific. It eliminated landfilling because we had tons of people inquiring about, hey, we can provide you landfill space for $50 a ton, we can do $45 a ton. We're not looking for for landfill space. Landfill space is going to eventually go away. So we made it, we were looking for alternative waste disposal, and landfilling did not meet that definition. We were seeking a proven technology, something somebody was operating somewhere else. So we don't go in, we're not going to be guinea pigs, and we're going to see if it works. We wanted a selection committee to be able to go out and see a system actually in operation. One of the other things was that we wanted to make sure that they've operated these systems for three years or more. It's one thing to have a design and an idea, it's another thing to operate them, you know, and the road is littered with companies that thought that they had the next great idea. So we wanted to see that in in the works. The next item that we were looking for was interim solutions. We we know that if you come in and you build a facility that's going to handle 480,000 tons of municipal waste and another 300,000 tons of commercial waste, it's going to take three, four, or five years to get them up and operating. So we encouraged some interim solutions. How can you start out and kind of ramp up to the total over time? That way, we could get some benefit early on. And part of the RFP was that there was some score, some opportunity for better score if you could do that. And then, a 20-year term is what we contemplated, but shorter, long-term terms can be proposed. And the reason we felt like 20 years is where we needed to be, our consultants told us that this was going to be a $250 million investment by someone at a minimum. So with that $250 million investment, it would take 20 years to to bring the price down to something that was reasonable in order to be able to make payments per ton for that for that waste. So things that takeaways for today, and really, the purpose of trying to get in front of you, to give you this early on, where, you know, kind of where we're headed, what we're doing, how we're thinking. Alternative waste disposal, again, is going to be a minimum $250 million. It could be as high as 600 million, depending on what what's proposed. The more the money, the longer the term we expect. Offers are likely proposed contracts for 20 years, and we've done the math, and we've had our financial consultants look at that, and we've gotten the information back from them on what we thought they might be looking for. The current use of support agreements, though, this is important. Our current use of support agreements will expire on June 30th of 2027, or could expire. They don't automatically expire. Each of the member communities would have to notify SIPSA six months in advance of that, that they were not going to renew, and then it would expire June 30th of 2027. Someone comes to SIPSA with a proposal, and it's got a 20-year term. We can't sign a proposal that has a 20-year term if we only have member communities signed up to use our service for the next three years. It just doesn't work out when you go to the bank to borrow the money. So we're looking for more long-term commitments from our member communities so that we can enter into an agreement like this. So we'll be likely be coming back to you once we've had time to review, had our consultants have had time to review the financial aspects of these proposals with some terms that we think might be what they're looking for and what we can negotiate to. And then, we want to hear back from from you all as to where you where you stand on those those ideas. Because, believe me, when we start putting these use of support agreements together, if we come back with something that's kind of out in left field, it's not going to work. We've got to understand that that we've got to listen to what you all are saying. So this dialogue that I talked about early on is something that we need to start now. We need to have regular dialogue about it. We need to keep you informed as to what the what's going on with the process and how we're moving forward. Here's a conceptual schedule that I've shared with all of the member communities, but this is changing by the day, as you can imagine, as we go through the process. We're currently reviewing proposals, trying to determine if they actually meet the minimum qualifications. So this will kind of change, and it'll turn into what it's going to be as we move forward. But right now, it looks like a year from now is when we would actually have a a deal done, if we have a deal done. If we can come to an agreement, it will look like it would happen about a year from now. And with that, I would be glad to answer any questions about the the RFP or the plan moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley. And I do want to inform my colleagues that came in a little bit after we started, the technology isn't working tonight as far as voting or asking for the floor. So if you could please raise your hand so we can see it, you will be called on at that time. Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And, Mr. Bagley, good to see you again.
Good to see you, Councilman.
I appreciate the comprehensive presentation, and I also appreciate SIPSA looking for alternative waste disposal methods. Now, with Now, with that said, you know, with the RFI, are we requesting information on something that doesn't exist currently? And have we gone to organizations like National League of Cities, First Cities, and see if it's somebody out there that's utilizing something other than landfills to process municipal waste?
Is that the end of your question? I'm sorry, I didn't want to step on you.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Well, Councilman, there are a lot of different technologies that are being currently used. There are a number of large, large companies who are doing this in other localities. It's relatively new, but the technology is available. We've not asked for anything that's not available. We're not asking for new stuff. We're looking for something that's proven. Typically, what we received back on the request for information was AI and robots sorting one can of waste. So instead of having a blue can and a black can, you have one can. You put all the waste in that one can. They dump it in this sorter. It sorts out the plastics, the paper, organics, cardboard, anything that can take out of it. It takes it out, and the remainder is left as residual, and that gets landfilled. They've proven that they can get down to, depending on the community, but in many cases, they've gotten as far as 75% of the total waste stream to be recycled. They, all of the respondents, after we gave them our waste characterization study, came back and said 60% of our waste was easily done with the technology that they're using. And we've seen it work. I've been to plants in Ohio and watched the systems work. They're quite amazing, and the longer they work, the smarter they get. They can identify purity, particular products. So yes, this is not something that's new. It's not something that's widely being used. But there are a number of municipalities that are starting to use this type of sorting system. So the next step is what do you do with the organics? You know what you do with recyclables. You take those and you sell them as a commodity. Then what they're doing with the organics is they're making either syn gas or biochar. There's a number of different things you can do with that. They're all proven, they're currently doing it. They're just putting a couple of different technologies together. That process is where most of the expense comes in. And that's where the difference in most of the proposals that have come back in are. See, we've gone through the RFI process, and now we're into the RFP, and we're reviewing those proposals. And what we found is the difference in the proposals is how they're managing those organics.
Right. So the ultimate solution is making the sorting more efficient and thereby reducing the organics or the MSW piece of it to eliminate landfills.
That's correct. Well, you don't eliminate it, but you reduce the amount that you're putting in there.
Yeah. What, in our area here, other than SIPSA's landfills, are there a lot of private landfills still available for municipalities?
There's about the landfill, it's owned by the city of Hampton. And due to things that occurred long before my time and probably before, except other than you, probably before everybody else in this facility, Hampton said that SIPSA could only put 40,000 tons a year into the landfill. We've got to currently have a waiver from Hampton. We went to Hampton City Council with Waste Management, who operates that landfill, and we asked for a waiver so we could actually get some waste over there because of what was going on on the south side. And Hampton's council agreed to that, but it's only for a short time. So 40,000 tons we can take over there at a rate of $37.50 per ton. Atlantic landfill, which is Waverly, is a long way away. It has plenty of capacity, and our rate there is $37 a ton. But it's a long haul. And when you look at greenhouse gases, you look at the traffic on 460, you look at fossil fuel usage. We've done the math, we've done the calculations. We've had consultants come back and check our calculations. And we've proven that this is not the best use and the best price in the long run, even today. And when that space goes away, it's going to be even more expensive. So the next closest is Republic landfill. It's 100 miles away. Schu Smith, which was one of the ones we started looking at early on, which is in Richmond, it just recently closed. So there's not much option, there's not many options for us. We're municipal land, municipal landfills.
Thank you.
Councilman Hugo, you have the floor then. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Bagley, thanks for being here tonight. Appreciate the detail. I have a couple of questions, starting with Slide 4, which is the waste flow chart. Just to make sure I understand, so Slide 4 only represents black can waste, does not include blue can waste, right?
That's correct.
So blue cans go to RDS and they deal with the recycling, which kind of solves the "we do it" and some of our other communities in Hampton Roads do not continue to provide recycling for now. In the long-term vision, would the blue cans and the black cans all become one can and it all goes into sorting in order to get your 60% recyclable number?
Yes, sir. But that's certainly, there's lots got to happen for that to take place. I mean, the use of support agreements have to be changed, and we have to make sure we have a contract that we can all agree on. So, and we have to work through that process first.
So does the RFP that you've assembled assume that's the vision, that's where we want to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay. On Slide 6, so first bullet, loss of revenue and closure, a wheel of brader. I guess the question on here is really to the city manager, and maybe to the assessor and to the commissioner of revenue. But manager, if you could get that information, so what revenue are we losing? And I guess we're losing it starting the very last day of this fiscal year. So was that factored into our budget for FY '25, please? Third bullet, SIPSA's negotiating with the Navy and wind waste for the RDF plant. My understanding is that you're negotiating to use the tipping station side of the RDF plant, the actual trash burning side, wheel of braders on the hook to tear that down and turn that property back over to the Navy? Or is eventually that property also part of what SIPSA is aiming to acquire?
No, sir, you're correct. The parcel that's on opposite side of Victory Boulevard, that's called an RDF facility, refuse derived fuel. So that's where they actually produce fuel to send over to the waste energy plant to burn and produce energy. So when I'm referencing the RDF facility, I'm referencing the facility where the trash comes in. It's really a large tip floor.
Yep.
Trucks dump on the tip floor. It holds, it would be the largest tip floor we have in our network. It would hold about 2,400 tons a day.
And that becomes where our black cans get tipped?
That is correct.
Okay.
The difference in it is now, you're, up until January, you were tipping with all the other commercials and everybody else in your waiting line. This would be front of the line because it's Portman's tip floor.
Okay. And then on Slide 16, your timeline, you said, and I agree with you, that you'll have to have use and support agreements from all of the participating communities. I don't see that in your timeline. Where does that fit into your timeline? I mean, I assume it has to happen before the board approves the contract.
Well, it will have to be done before that because nobody's going to sign a contract with us. That's kind of where we left that out because we really need to figure out how quickly we need to do that. When the contracts, when we finish reviewing the RFPs and we begin to develop a contract, they're going to want to know before they sign a contract with us that there's going to be the waste to be able to pay the bill. So we're going to have to figure that out ahead of that. And I think probably the realistic timeframe for that is the end of this year.
Okay, that looks like it kind of fits into where you would guess in your timeline that it needs to fit. Thank you, appreciate it.
Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Bagley, for the detailed presentation. I've learned a lot with this presentation. Looking at Slide 15, the alternative waste disposal proposal you mentioned will require companies to invest $250 billion and could potentially increase to $650 million?
That's correct, depending on what type of system they decide to put in.
Okay, and I guess there will be, so the member companies are you talking about? Is that the member community of those?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
That's the company that's going to come in and build these structures and operate them. And they would contract with SIPSA then to bring our waste to them at a certain per-ton rate. So they would invest that money. But in order to, for them to get a return on that investment, they're going to have to have waste coming in for some period of time. And we're still going through their financials to determine what that is.
Okay, because that was kind of scary, that 250 for the member. And when you now get into the member community, how many members do we have? And is there any possibility or opportunity to look at some others across the region to include them to kind of drive some of the cost?
We currently have eight member communities. Chesapeake, Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Portsmouth, Suffolk, Olive White, Southampton, and Portsmouth.
Okay.
And from an operational standpoint, our network reaches out to those communities and is set up for those eight member communities. To go outside of those eight member communities probably makes us less efficient. We have done some kind of modeling to see what that might look like. And I meet with all of the regional authorities across the state every quarter. And we have a lot of conversations about that to see if there's areas that aren't currently being touched by an authority, is there opportunities? And we have some, but it just doesn't make sense from an operational standpoint to extend past where we are currently.
Right. Okay, and then there was a last question. There's a slide nine with the, speaking to the different cells. And I see we start with cell five and six.
Yes, ma'am.
So cells one, two, and three, if their life expectancy is already expired, what happens to the space, the landfill space? I mean, is it, what is it used for? Is it just?
Well, they're currently in what's called post-closure. After you close a landfill, you have to go through a period of time where you prove that the cell is no longer any danger. We take regular testing, annual inspections constantly. We're making improvements. If we have an area where we've got drainage problems, we have to fix it. And then eventually that gets, the post-closure ends, and you can do with it a lot of things, but it has to be approved by DEQ. We're not at that point quite yet, but I think we're getting very, very close where we can have a Suffolk community, members of Suffolk community, especially those that are around, that live around a landfill, come together as a focus group and make a determination on what they want to do with that land. There's a lot of possibilities, a beautiful site. We maintain it well. I welcome any of you that want to take a tour. I'll personally give you a tour of the facility. I'm very proud of it. It's clean, it's well taken care of. And those cells are going to offer a community quite an asset once we get to that point. But currently, we're in post-closure, so we're not doing anything with it. But we're very close to being able to bring in a group of citizens that live around it. And I've talked with the city manager in Suffolk about how he would like to see that happen. And I think we're all on the same page, and that's how we would deal with that.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bagley. Two questions. The first, did I understand you to say that SIPSA is moving in the direction of there only being a, instead of the black and the blue, that there's going to only be one can?
We believe that's the wave of the future, yes, sir. But we have proposals, and if somebody puts a proposal in for some other method and it makes sense, we would do that. But our research and our, the work that we've done shows that a single can recycling program works. And the reason being currently, and Portman's not like this because your program is set up differently. I was part of setting that program up, I know how your program is set up. And some of the other member communities, each household, whether they recycle or not, get charged a certain flat rate by the contractor, whether they put a can out for recycling or not. And what you see is a low percentage of people actually recycling, and you're paying a premium for that. What this does is it puts, every house gets recycled now. When you use mixed waste sortation and AI cameras, every house recycles. And if you can recycle 60% of what's in that can, imagine what happens to our recycling rate. I'm not going to announce a number because I don't think it's been made public yet. But our regional recycling number this year is going to be very close to the DEQ point where you have to do some things to make corrective action. So what we're doing is currently not working at the level that we could make it work through mixed waste sortation. So we're hopeful that that is the case.
The reason I ask that is because I thought when it was originally conceptualized that it was supposed to be a savings to the citizens that, but through way of tipping fees, that the amount of weight that would normally be dumped, that when you take those recycled items out, then what would be in the black can would be less, and therefore tipping fees would be lowered, and therefore it would be reflected in lower pricing for citizens. So.
You're absolutely right.
Right, so if we're going to put it all in one can, then how has that benefit to the citizen now been, I would say, kept?
Because what's happened in the recycling industry is we were sending, we were sending all of our recycling to China, and the recycling was good. We were making a lot of money, these vendors were making a lot of money on recycling. And the contract that Portsmouth had at the time was that we collect it, we take it to the recycler, we dump it on the floor, they recycle it, we don't get charged anything for it. And it, they handle it from there. So whatever you take out of the MSW waste stream is pure profit. And at the time, SIPSA was charging $125 a ton. So when you take $125 a ton for the recycling, and let's just say for the sake of discussion, you're removing 10,000 tons of recycling, times $125, that's quite a successful program. Well, what's happened is because recycling has become so expensive, none of the vendors are doing what they used to do. Now, you're paying a per-ton price, or typically, I don't know what your contract says now specifically, but typically what these vendors are doing is charging you a per-ton price to recycle and then giving you a percentage back in revenue for the recyclers that they sell. So if they are losing money on selling recyclables, they're still going to get $100 a ton to process it. And that $100 a ton is more than SIPSA's charging you now. So what used to be, eight years ago, very lucrative for you to do, is not lucrative anymore. It's actually costing you money. Does that make sense?
Well, when you speak of this vendor, for Portsmouth, who is this vendor that you're speaking of?
For recycling?
Right, right.
It's Recycle Disposal Solutions, RDS.
Right, so you're saying that that cost, that recycle cost is being passed on to the citizen? Because I thought that it was supposed to have been something that wasn't passed on, that it would be the tipping fee decrease that would benefit the citizen.
Originally, that was absolutely the case. There was no charge for them to process our recyclables. They kept all of the revenue from the recyclables.
So there is a charge now?
Yes, sir, it's my understanding there's a charge.
So Portsmouth, Portsmouth is paying for the blue can?
Yes, sir, for sorting of that.
Okay. I would be curious to find out when did that occur? Because I thought that it was a program that the citizens weren't supposed to be paying.
You are right, that's the way it started out, and every ton was $125 saved.
So, yeah, so we will get a follow-up, a follow-up on that. My second question then becomes, if that's the case, then who is being held accountable? My second question then becomes, if, if that's the case, then who is, who is being held accountable for what is being dumped at the tipping stations that ends up being sorted and then sent to the landfill? So this is a landfill issue that I'm raising now. So who's, who's accountable for determining what and how much is going to the landfill?
I'm not sure that 100% understand your question.
Well, when you have these trucks and they're bringing in the waste and it's being sorted or either the recycle, some of that ends up in the landfill.
Right.
Right, so the question becomes, who, who is being accountable for how much and what is going into the landfill? Because if there's no accountability of it, then again, the, the citizens are paying something that they shouldn't be paying, if it's recyclable.
You're 100% right.
But so who, who's?
We don't, we don't deal with your recycling now. Our, our role is to handle your municipal solid waste. That is done by private contractors.
So when it comes to?
It's RDS and then the other localities, it's, it's TFC.
So when it comes to the SIPSA station and what will eventually become this new waste to energy facility, is that correct? The, the old wheel abrader?
Yeah.
Right, so.
Yes, sir.
So when all of that waste comes there and it's determined that some of that waste is going to go to the landfill, correct?
That's correct.
So who, who is determining and who is measuring and who is accounting for what is actually going to the landfill and what we're actually paying for?
Well, you need to separate, I think, to, to really understand that, I think you've got to separate out what's happening now and what will be happening in the future. Currently, right now, SIPSA operates transfer stations that receive municipal solid waste from contractors and from localities. That's all we receive is municipal solid waste. We do not deal with any recycling at all. So that question then goes to the contractors who have the contracts with the individual localities. They would have to be accountable for that and they have been called out on that by some of the vendors, I mean, some of the cities.
Yeah.
That use them. Now, in the future, if this were to come to fruition and we were to do mixed waste sorting, there would be, in the contract, there would be requirements for that 60% number to be, that they would gain 60%. If that's what they say they're going to do, our numbers will be based on them doing 60% recycling out of it. And they would have to prove to us that they do 60%. So we would then become accountable for that number, SIPSA, if that, if all of this comes to fruition. But that's up down the road and it's certainly something that, that's, we have our eye on, how do we do that? It's, it's pretty easy to do.
Yeah, well, you, you're correct. That, that's a, that's a locality issue, that, that accountability. And so that would be something too that if we could have the city manager follow up with council. And the reason I'm raising that issue is because I know at one time, there was an issue at the landfill with the scale not working. And so it was issue of how are we even measuring? And so if we could follow up, Mr. Coleman, on how are we maintaining accountability for what and how much is being dumped into the landfill? That's coming from the transfer station. So, so when it gets to the transfer station and they sort all of that out, I guess there's a measurement that takes place at the transfer station that translates into a tipping fee. And then what is supposed to be recycled goes to the landfill. Well, how do we know what's being paid in a tipping fee? And what's being measured for tipping fee is really what should be measured? Because you, you have, you have a couple of items there, those items that are waste and those.
Counselor, I can answer that better. If that's, if that's your specific question, I can answer that very easily. Every truck that we take from one of our transfer stations gets weighed out of the transfer station.
Gets weighed what?
It gets weighed out.
Okay.
Before it leak, before it goes on the road, we weigh it out to make sure, and, and it's logged in a computer system. We have a very.
When you said before it goes on the road, you mean before it actually picks up anything?
No, once it's gone through the transfer station, it's picked up its load and it's going to wherever it's going to go to. It's weighed.
Okay.
Wherever it goes to, it gets weighed again and those tickets get matched up. And anyone who wants to see that, we can match up those tickets and, and they can, they can get them as part of their bill.
Okay.
Your, your bill, each one of your bills come, where we move that waste at doesn't really affect the locality at all. It's how much the trucks that come across the scale coming in. So truck 1301 goes across our scale and comes into the transfer station. That's what Portsmouth gets charged for. What's being transferred to the landfill or anywhere else Portsmouth not being charged for? They get charged for what comes into the transfer station. But what we can do, we have, we, we have a very comprehensive scale system and, and software to, to manage that. We can tell you how much you brought in and we can tell you how much waste we took out of the transfer station. The, where the problem lies with that, for trying to figure anything out from that, is it's all, that's all of the waste that comes in. So if Norfolk was working in Berkeley and they were using your transfer station, it would be a mix of, of Portsmouth and Norfolk's waste. But if you want to know your trucks, we weigh every single one of your trucks when they come in.
Yeah, but I thought you was, I thought you said originally that what's coming in there is both waste and recyclable. So there's a sorting that takes place and that, which is to be recycled, goes to the landfill.
What comes into our transfer stations currently is what's picked up out of your black cans. Your blue cans go to a private contractor. What's coming into the black cans come to us and it gets weighed in. And your bill every month shows every single truck, what time they cross the scale and how many tons of waste were in that truck. And your driver gets one when he goes across the scale. So he can say if he's got any question with, hey, that's not the right weight, we just, it's not, we don't have that because we get our scales certified regularly.
Right, so, but there are some items that come in that black can that are transferred to the landfill because they should have been in a blue can?
No, sir.
So everything in the black can is what should have been in the black can?
It, it is unless it's not, unless it's unauthorized waste. And if it's unauthorized waste, a battery or something like that, we.
I, I commend our citizens then because they, you're saying everything that they put in there is what's supposed to be in there? That there's no recyclables that are taken out of the black?
There's nothing that, that, we're not looking at this from a, from a recycling standpoint because we're not involved in the recycling. That is between the city, the locality, and a contractor that does the recycling. What we're looking at is, is it, is it authorized waste? And plastic, paper, recyclables are all authorized in our transfer stations, so we would have no reason to not take it. What we wouldn't take would be lead acid batteries. And if we see that it comes out of the truck, then we send it back with the truck.
But you would transfer that paper and pla, you would transfer that to a landfill or you just?
Not currently. That's what we're going to, that's what we're proposing to do in the future. And that's what this RFP is about. It's trying to figure out a way to get that paper and plastic that's coming to our landfill or to our transfer stations out of it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
I believe the recycling program that my colleagues alluding to, wasn't that based on participation? As I recall, that the higher the percentage of people that were participating in the recycling program meant the, the more money or savings that we're going to get. And, and that, that program is in writing somewhere still. I think it would be good for each of us to get a copy of that, Mayor. And I don't recall, I recall that being ushered in with great fanfare, but I don't recall it being discontinued. So I think it would be good to take a look at it again and see if it's applicable to what we're doing now. And I suspect that participation is, is not good on recycling now. I noticed that in my own community, that you don't see the blue cans on the, on the side like you used to.
Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. At the risk of further confusing things, currently, all of our trucks, blue can and black can trucks are going to RDS and they're tipping there, correct?
That's correct.
And?
And the, the municipal waste that's going there out of the black cans is being put, put up in a, in a backhoe, put in the truck and hauled over to Bethel.
Got it. So when does the RDF tipping station, our transfer station, when does that come online so that we stop sending everything to RDS and we send the black cans to, to Victory Boulevard?
We take the, the facility, we take ownership of the facility on July 1. They have six months to do the requested demolition to the facility. And then we're looking at probably six months of renovation. We got painting, we've got some doors that need to be replaced, there's a number of safety issues that have to be dealt with. And then we're, we're looking at opening sometime around June 30th of 2025.
So we're in for another year plus?
If we can, if we can bring, you know, i- i- if we can bring waste on the tipping floor earlier than that, we will. But that's what our plan has kind of looked like. But, you know, that's, that's to be conservative. I mean, we, we don't want to tell you, yeah, you can come in in June and we're not there, we're not ready in June.
Yeah.
We, we believe we'll be ready before that. But we don't think that it's, it's appropriate to open that unless it's, it's representative of SIPSA and that if so many rides by there, it doesn't look like the same facility anymore.
Okay.
So there's a lot of work that needs to be done.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
So, so Mr. Bagley, what's the pro, once this new process is put in place, what's the projected savings that Portsmouth citizens should see?
Well, first, you, you got to know what, what your, your, it likely won't be a savings, I can tell you that. Likely not going to be a savings at all. If we can break even, we've hit a home run. But I'm going to look closer. I've, I did some research when we were putting out the RFPs and that's where I learned that you all were now paying a tip fee for your recyclables, a flat tip fee. And that seems to be what's happening across the, the whole entire nation. Doesn't surprise me that that's, that's the direction that's, that they've moved to. But I'm going to do some more research and make sure I know what the tip fee is. I think the tip fee is around $100 a ton, but I, I don't want to put that out and say that's the fact because I'm, I'm not certain that it is. I, I'm, I'm pretty certain that it is, but I'm not 100% certain, so I don't want to say that.
Okay, and Mr. Coleman, you did get the note about council being updated on when the tip fee started applying to recyclables?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bagley, thank you, and I think that's very appropriate to provide the information. And we're looking forward to receiving that information relative to our process and we certainly appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
We've now come to the part of our work session for council liaison reports. Do we have any liaison reports today? Seeing none, we do have a need for a closed session. And I would ask at this time, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, would you please read the closed session motion?
Thank you, I will. I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2, 37 and 11A19 for the purpose of discussing reports or plans related to the security of any governmental facility, building, or structure, or the safety of persons using such facility, building, or structure specifically regarding the city jail.
We have motion, we need a second. We have a second. I would, I would ask that everyone vote on the roll call. Mr. Moody seconded. So we need to now call the roll.
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes? Mr. Hugo?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes, we are in closed session. Closed session meeting and if, I would now ask Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, if you would re, read the certification for close.
Yes, I will. I hereby move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Hugo?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes. That concludes our public work session for today. We will reconvene at 7:00 PM for our regular council meeting. Thank you.